Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We appreciate seeing all of you here tonight. We've got a number of important items on the agenda and a few fun items. So, thank you for coming. Welcome to those of you who are appearing via Zoom or on telephone. So, thank you as well. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella has been excused. Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss. And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd all stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of the significant contributions of our servicemen and women serving this great nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to Our Nation's Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you again for joining us tonight. The first section of our meeting agenda is always one of our favorites, and that's the proclamation and presentation section. And first tonight, we have a proclamation declaring September 11, 2024, as Patriot Day and Day of Remembrance here in the city of Lakewood. And for this, I'd like to call on our Chief Jim Sharp, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, along with our Police Chief Patrick Smith from the Lakewood Police Department to receive the proclamations, followed by the never-ending photograph with council. So, if you'll join me, Chief Smith and Chief Sharp. For many of us, this particular day hearkens back to the Alan Jackson country music song, "Do You Remember When?" And many of us certainly do, whether we're parents of children, certainly whether we were students ourselves in college or just going about our daily lives. It was a day certainly of remembrance and will be for many, many, many decades to come. And that's why the city of Lakewood and its council is proud to present this proclamation to those representing our first responders here with us tonight and always with us on the streets of our city in service to the residents of this great, great city of Lakewood. Whereas on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 men, women, and children who were going about their normal routines were taken from us, depriving families and loved ones of a lifetime of precious moments. And whereas in the years that followed, we worked to rebuild our nation more sound and resilient than ever before, united and determined to strengthen our country's character with acts of endurance and hope, renewal, and progress. And whereas the pain inflicted on our nation on that fated day, September 11, was felt by people of every race, background, and faith. And though many young Americans have grown up without knowing firsthand the horrors of that morning, their lives have been shaped by it. And whereas the compassion that rose in the hearts and minds of the American people following September 11 serves as the ultimate rebuke on those who wish evil on this great nation. And whereas first responders who risked and gave their lives to rescue others demonstrated the unwavering heroism that defines or should define our country in the hearts and minds of all of us. And whereas on Wednesday, September 11, 2024, at 5:30 PM, the public is invited to attend a remembrance ceremony at West Pierce Fire and Rescue Station 31 to reflect on the 23rd anniversary of these attacks, the lives lost, and to pay tribute to the families who still live with extraordinary pain. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 11, 2024, as Patriot Day here in the city of Lakewood, Patriot Day and a Day of Remembrance. And we urge all residents to observe a moment of silence, to honor those innocent victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks, and to observe this day with remembrance and honor of those individuals. Proclaim this third day of September 2024, myself as mayor and all members of the city council. And so Chief Sharp and Chief Smith, on behalf of all of us, we provide you with these proclamations to post in your respective locations. And the floor is yours for comments, followed by a photo. Thank you.
Thank you.
I better go first because Chief Smith is pretty eloquent, and I don't want to follow that. So, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, I truly appreciate being here. I know I say that every year, but I say it because it's true. It's been almost a quarter of a century, and it seems like every day that we get further and further from those tragic events, there's fewer and fewer times that it gets remembered like this. And I really want to applaud the council and the city of Lakewood for taking the time to always recognize that day, to always acknowledge it with this proclamation, to always continue to do what we ask so much of everyone, and that is to never forget. As the mayor said, close to 3,000 people not only sacrificed their lives that day, but so many citizens came to the rescue that day and truly became heroes in my eyes. They weren't first responders, all of them. Many of them were just friends, neighbors, and people who wanted to do the right thing to help out. And so this remembrance is not just about those we've lost, but it's also to acknowledge all those who stepped up that day in all that terror and moved forward and brought our country together. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I want to thank you for taking the time to present this proclamation in honor of those who lost their lives. On that day, regular citizens lost their lives. Also, first responders who went into an area that they saw covered in flames, smoke, and people laying about. For those who watched it on television and those who were present, it'll be forever etched in your mind. It'll be etched in your thoughts. And when someone mentions that day, you know the tragedies that occurred. You know how it impacted the lives and the families and the people of that city. More importantly, those in law enforcement and our firefighter compadres, they went on and suffered years from breathing in the smoke, breathing in all of the things that impacted that environment. So, I thank you. I thank you for honoring the lives lost. I thank you for honoring the ordinary citizen who was just trying to go about their day. We greatly appreciate it, and I'm eternally grateful to all of you for taking the time to recognize everyday people.
We're making sure our technology works so we can actually have data to work with tonight. So, thank you for your patience. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. And for this, I'd like to have Councilmember Patty Bell. Call on Abraham Moreno, owner of Sugar Bones Tacos, to receive the proclamation.
Your wife can join too, if you'd like.
Oh, please.
Brianna, if you'd like. Okay, great. Well, thank you, Abraham and Brianna, for coming in today. Sugar Bones has been in Lakewood for the last three years, and I couldn't be happier. It's been amazing. So, it's just so welcoming, and on top of that, the food is fabulous. But I love that they're a great representation of the Hispanic community in Lakewood and growing. So, I will read the proclamation. Come, Brianna. It's okay. So, whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans represent the largest minority group in the United States with more than 60 million residents, and in Lakewood, more than 11,500 people of Hispanic and Latino heritage call our city home and have helped build and strengthen our community for generations at every level. And whereas we proudly celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, an observation that began in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1988, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, programs, and revisiting our history. And whereas from September 15 through October 15, we give special attention to honor the invaluable ways Hispanic and Latin Americans contribute to the fabric of our community by celebrating our common goals, learning about their diverse cultures, and working towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs that make our nation great while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas in Lakewood, Hispanic and Latin Americans are a significant and fast-growing demographic, representing the largest minority group, and their contributions to the city are invaluable, including through small business ownership, volunteerism, and workforce support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim September 15, 2024 through October 15, 2024, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans at our Fiesta de la Familia event on Saturday, September 7, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Fort Silicon Park, proclaimed this third day of September, 2024, Mayor Jason Whalen and the Lakewood City Council. So, thank you, Abraham.
That's awesome. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So, if you want to say anything.
Yeah. I feel like I should be taking an order right now. Kidding. Well, thank you so much. We, you know, we really appreciate and we're very grateful for the city of Lakewood welcoming us with open arms. We started about three years ago in our backyard, and my son had taken a ride to Stella Com Park, and that was it. We fell in love with Lakewood. We fell in love with the area. And everyone that supports us, we're extremely grateful, and we just love everything that we do. And we like that we could showcase it every single day. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Abraham and your family, for certainly taking a risk to do business here in Lakewood. We appreciate it. And it's wonderful tonight that we also get to recognize another small family business, Burr's Restaurant, as our business showcase. And you know, it goes without saying with our Econon Development Department, all of us here, we very much appreciate all of our businesses in Lakewood, the national chains. But it's especially wonderful to embrace and celebrate those who are engaged in small business because you provide the diversity, not of just flavors, but certainly the diversity of the characterization of this community through your business, and we love that. So, if Chris Judd, the Southern Regional Director of Sound Restaurant Family, would join me at the dais there or the podium, we'll present our business showcase. Well, for many of you who have lived in Lakewood for a number of years, I haven't been here 70 years, but I've been here a number, at least over two decades. Burr's has been a staple in this community since the 1950s. For nearly 70 years, the welcoming staff at Burr's has served comfort food to Lakewood residents in the mornings and have provided a place to meet their friends after work at night. Throughout this time, ownership of the restaurant has changed twice, but the spirit of the restaurant, including many of the staff and guests, has remained the same. For its reputation of great food, community, and outstanding service, and for many, many years as an established landmark here in Lakewood, we recognize Burr's as our September Business Showcase. So, we have this certificate, Chris, that I'll read to you. And then we have a video that we're going to share, and then we'll give you a chance to say a few things, and then we'll bring us all down for a photo. City of Lakewood recognizes as its business showcase for this month of September 2024 Burr's Restaurant because of its many years of outstanding service and dedication to the community as a restaurant staple in Lakewood. So, Chris, again, thank you for coming. I'm going to give you this. We'll take a photo down below. But we'll play a video now, and we'll get a little bit more of the story and then give you a chance to say a few things.
Hi, my name is Chris. I'm the Southern Regional Director for Sound Restaurant Family, and I oversee Burr's Restaurant here in Lakewood. So, early in the morning, about 5:00 AM, our staff starts to get in. We start to get the griddles ready and going. We get the coffee kind of pumping up, and we get our first stream of regulars right at around 7:00 AM for our first hour. The Lakewood community has always come in and support us early in the morning with its regulars. And then we've had a lot of new families coming into the area, start to make this their daily routine. So, really just being a part of the community to me, being seen these regulars every day, and then inviting these new customers in every single day as well. I myself am most proud of the staff and their level of caring. You cannot teach people how to care about where they work. And so, seeing the people coming in every single day and the level of care that they give to the guests and to the food is very important to me and to the business. The people that live in this community that also work here care deeply about it. You know, a couple of our servers, their mothers worked here previously. We have one server in particular, she's worked here for 35 years now. And so, again, those people are just very deeply connected with the community living here and wanting to see this place grow and be successful. On behalf of Burr's Restaurant, I just want to thank the community of Lakewood. We are very grateful and thankful for the decades that we have been here, and we continue to welcome everyone in every single day as a part of our family. You know, small businesses alike. We love to see the people coming in every single day. We're honored, of course, to be recognized on the same day as our first responders as well. And so, we're very grateful to everything that they do as well. It was really all a impact.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Awesome.
Microphone. Next, we're pleased to have our youth council for their youth council report. And if Violet Johnson and Renita Benevente would give us the overview for the evening.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Council. My name is Violet Johnson, and this is my fourth year serving on the Lakewood Youth Council. So, we had our first Lakewood Youth Council meeting. But first, I just want to say we started off with a kickoff event on August 24, and it was about having fun and getting to know each other. And we had some of the council members attend, and we had to participate in this marshmallow challenge where we had to stack them and try to get the highest, like, tower. And it was just a good bonding moment for the council members and the Lakewood Youth Council members. And it really helped establish the excitement and the positive environment and reinforcements that are fostered by the youth and Lakewood Youth Council wants to reinforce. So, to begin though, we began our first Lakewood Youth Council meeting to start off the year. And we began by setting ground rules regarding officer duties that all of us will have to follow, along with the city communities that we all as youth will liaison for. And then afterwards, we began working together in discussion about elected positions within the Lakewood Youth Council, such as Chair, Co-Chair, and Secretaries. And these positions will essentially assist in the smooth planning and outreach to other youth council members and ensure commitment and obligation to achieve the goals and initiatives to be made by the Lakewood Youth Council. And the results will be provided for the next meeting as to who won. We had a big group of us. We went forward, and we did like one- to two-minute, like, discussion of why we thought we were best for the position. And then we all had to do this type of voting system. So, we can provide that for you guys next meeting. And then from there, the end of our meeting focused on team scheduling and drafting ideas that will help guide Lakewood Youth Council's group initiative. And then finally, our next meeting will focus on the areas of emphasis for the school year, along with setting the dates and plannings for the upcoming Youth Empowerment Summit and the prospective ideas for other youth standard events and group projects. But another big thing is that an important decision was made for choosing the color that will represent the Lakewood Youth Council. And we chose to go for blue to support the Lakewood Council's branding of the color blue. And thank you so much for listening. And now, turning over to Renita Benevente.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. My name is Renita Benevente. This is my second year on Youth Council. This year, I approached Shannon, and I proposed, and I also took on the role as a Communications Manager. The purpose of this new role is to have effective communication between our members and to have routinely controlled advocating posts and messages centered around Lakewood Youth Council. This year, Lakewood, this year, Youth Council will have our main goals, but we will also be dedicating some time during our monthly meetings to discuss how we will, how we plan to show off Youth Council in a fun and civil way. Shannon has communicated with IT to aim to get a city property phone or camera that me or another Youth Council member can use to capture events or create ideas that Bryn and Derek cannot. So, this will conclude our Youth Council presentation. Are there any concerns or questions?
Well, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Violet, Renita. Last year, the Youth Council organized itself to look at a number of areas of emphasis, but with dividing itself into specific committees to do that work. And I didn't necessarily hear that in your presentations today. So, are you refining how you're going to do that? Or are we going to be doing it much like last year?
So, what we decided was that, you know, our group has been growing. I think we had 40 new members join, or 42 members joined. That's a really big staple for us. So, we're all discussing, and it was, how could we efficiently? And, oh, efficient, efficiently, sorry. How could we efficiently have all of our minds put together? Because, you know, we're youth, and it's all about outreach, and we're all brilliant. We all have great ideas and a bunch of things we want to accomplish. So, I was, we were all discussing, and it was, how could we best take our time and work together so that we can get a lot accomplished for the end of the school year when we all choose to come to our ends? So, we were discussing, you know, meetings. But another big topic was not essentially splitting into, like, small groups because we noticed that when we did that last year, there was a bit of stray away from that. We were thinking of having a different type of group where there was more focus on certain topics, and then we would work with that. But we're still getting things set up. We could give an official thing probably next meeting, but we're still trying to decide timings for all of us because it's a big group, and youth, we have a lot going on. So, we're just trying to see what we can best coordinate with each other.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate being invited to the kickoff event for those of folks that were there and of being able to participate. It looked like there was, you know, we were there just for the last hour, but it looked like there was a lot of positive energy in the group when we got there and it continued while we were there. So, you know, I think that bodes well for the year for the Youth Council. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, guys, for your
And thank you guys for your reports. I had a lot of fun at just team building event. That was a lot of fun. And I, and I know you guys work hard at doing something different each year and I appreciate that, but you guys got your hands full for this one because last, the last group did a great job and I'm sure you guys will continue to do better in your way. So thank you for everything. You guys are great. Thanks.
Councilmember Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, ladies, for coming tonight. I was very fortunate to be here for the last about 10 minutes of the Youth Council meeting. So that was really great to hear you guys talking and I really appreciate that you've looked at your efficiencies to see the best way to get us back the information. Also wanted to let you know again that Councilmember Laura Sella and I are here to facilitate and reach out to us. And you guys let us know too, when you would like us to come to your meetings and where you would need extra involvement so we can bring it back to the group as a whole. But thank you, I'm so excited. The group is huge. It was amazing. Looking forward to the year.
Anyone else? Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just wanted to say I also appreciated going to the kickoff. I had a lot of fun. We didn't, we weren't victorious, but it was, it was a lot of fun. So I appreciated being involved and looks like you guys have a great group of youth to do lots of wonderful things. So appreciate it.
Well, and thank you very much for being so engaged. It's gonna be a great year and for willing, your willingness to engage with us. Look forward to kind of more interactions as we get along in the school year. So it's gonna be fabulous. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You so much.
Madam Clerk, I don't know if we have a school district report tonight. We're on deck to have Board Member David Anderson report.
Mayor, I don't see Board Member Anderson in the council chambers or virtually in attendance this evening.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll then turn to the next section of tonight's agenda, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, this Brianna Schumacher, at B Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us or to the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council members electronically. And for purposes of establishing our record tonight, the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received no public comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. There are public hearings this evening as well. So if you have testimony to provide for the public hearing as designated, I would encourage you to do so at that particular time in tonight's agenda and not do so during the general public comment period if that's your inclination. Members of the audience certainly may comment on items in this public comment period, but we ask that they be related to city business. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please just state your name and residence of record and then you will be provided your three minutes with the time clock. Virtual comments are likewise welcomed. If you would like to provide live virtual public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number as indicated, 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the room, please use the raise the hand feature so that the clerk and/or myself can see you and call on you when appropriate. So I will first tonight call on those who are here in person, followed by those who are appearing Zoom. And the first we have is Dr. Mirjel Lili. Lili, excuse me, Dr. Mirjel Lili.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjel Lili. I'm a resident of Lakewood. Of course, this council knows me very well, so does the rest of the city employees. My comment regarding ARPA is that first, how much fund is available in that? Any idea? Because I understood that it was $6.54 million in 2022. And considering that the COVID has already ended, I'm not sure how much of it is available or how much of it is allocated. Two, if I understood that this is primarily for affordable housing and development of the area that might be within the metropolitan area or somewhere that it might be more difficult so to develop because of that, there is special allocation. I don't know if I'm correct in my understanding or not, but regardless, I think that when I look at the, how this council has acted in the past, maybe year or two that I am aware of, I see some contradiction in this. For example, like the 11 acre of land when basically was cut down and made a warehouse, that could have been allocated to the housing because as there is less of a land available to the public, so the, but the demand is not gonna go down. It's, the demand is gonna remain the same. As a result, the cost of the housing is gonna go up. And that's like defeating itself, the council by approving such plans. If, do you know, another one, I understood that QFC, the owner of it is asked to give up on his land to make it a park. Well, maybe that land could have been made a park rather than his and maybe some people could have worked at the same place which is, which they used to. I understand that the owner is an investor, but this council could encourage investors like that to come to this town and invest and more people could have a job and have a living than make him, you know, offended. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Dunlop.
James Dunlop, Lakewood. I want to address the mayor's closing comments at the August 19th council meeting regarding the 100th Street Road End. The mayor described the road end as tiny. It is not. It is .27 acres. Further, the mayor contended that the proposed purchase of a road end had nothing to do with capturing public access. Well, a group of citizen volunteers who went to the site to clean it up, found themselves being reported to the police. The mayor mentioned the city's recommendations for street ends in 2009. That was 15 years ago. Meanwhile, according to a recent draft staff report, the Public Works Engineering Department regarded vacation as being contrary to city and state law. He also didn't address the suspicions of many Lakewood residents that the mayor regards the concerns of Clinton P. Johnson as being more significant and actionable than the concerns of most other residents. I understand that the mayor has now acknowledged that Johnson is his friend. One might then assume that the mayor has greater empathy with Johnson than, for example, with a residence living near Edgewater Park. Lesser residents have to put up with the consequences of public access, but the mayor's friends might not have to. It further appears that the mayor is shameless. Residents can see evidence of partiality and he doesn't care. Concerns about crime on Edgewater are dismissed, while similar concerns at the 100th Street Road End might lead to the area being sold off to some of the affected owners. The shamelessness is further suggested by the fact that the mayor, to my knowledge, has not recused himself from this vote. Even if he did, he still has influence. So really, the whole council should recuse themselves or recuse itself. And then throws the city's reputation, which a mayor doesn't seem bothered about. If under his leadership, the city council votes to vacate the road end, then he is bringing the city into disrepute. And if a mayor doesn't understand the importance of maintaining the trust of Lakewood's residents, of being seen to be impartial, then he is not fit for public office. Indeed, the city of Lakewood must make it clear that it will not tolerate cronyism.
That is the last individual who's signed up on the public comment sheet to address council during the public comment period. Are there any others in the audience who wish to speak? If not, I'll turn to those on Zoom who have signed in to speak. And it looks, we have Christina Manetti with a hand raised.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Christina Manetti, Lakewood. I just wanted to let you know that the city and its council have been giving the public in Lakewood a very bad impression lately. We are still wondering how you can justify the condemnation, confiscation and demolition of someone's home at, next to Edgewater Park. You argue that it doesn't even belong to Dr. Mirjel Lili. How can you say this if the court case deciding the boundary dispute hasn't even taken place yet? And it's all to make a parking lot for just four boat trailer parking spaces at a tiny park of just one acre, even though they say it's three acres now all of a sudden. And now you are considering selling a piece of lake access at 100th Street to a friend of the mayor's. Selling it is, it appears, against the law. See the relevant RCW. It doesn't fulfill the requirements. The size of that access is not tiny, as the mayor said last time. It is over a quarter of an acre. Plenty to build a house and even a garage. The very fact that the council is even considering this is shocking. If someone, is someone afraid to tell Judge Johnson no that this looks really bad? Did he just sit here silently last time with his wife to make his presence known? The council knows the ways of bullies very well. The council must deny this unseemly vacation request and those proposing it should be ashamed. Thank you.
That is the only individual with a hand raised. There are some others on Zoom. I will leave it open for a few seconds to see if anyone wishes to address council during the public comment period appearing on Zoom. Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of August 12th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 19th, 2024. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $4,863.87 for the period of July 16th, 2024 through August 15th, 2024. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,92,742.88 for the period of July 16th, 2024 through August 15th, 2024. E, motion number 2024-56, appointing Gregory Rags to serve on the Community Services Advisory Board through December 15th, 2028. F, resolution number 2024-11, setting a public hearing on October 7th, 2024 to consider the proposed vacation of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 26, 2023.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the proposed consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Councilmember Brandstetter?
I would like to remove item F.
Very good. Do we have then a motion to adopt items A through G minus item F on the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we adopt the consent agenda minus item F at this time. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda minus item F has been adopted. We now turn to item F, resolution number 2024-11. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2024-11, setting a public hearing on October 7th, 2024 to consider the proposed vacation of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest.
Very good. And so I can have the opportunity for folks to speak to this particular item. Do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-11? Discussion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Brandstetter that we adopt a resolution 2024-11. Mr. Brandstetter, would you wish to speak to this motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was concerned that this packet is, when it was discussing of scheduling this for a public hearing and it had the application by the two applicants who were two of the three who have boundaries on it to be able to go and do that. And that in the places in the packet where it talked about the value, the appraisal of this area to be vacated, it's blank. Like we don't know it. And we've recently gone through another vacation of where we started off and we had a similar situation of where we set a public hearing and we actually worked through the processes to the point of where it was on the agenda for us to act on it. And then it came to light that the appraisal of the land to be vacated wasn't in a complete application for the vacation. And so we, yeah, we ended, then we, so we ended up pushing it off for another month to make, to make a decision. And I'm sort of, sort of wondering what is going on in our process of where we get an application that is not complete with an appraisal? And that then we immediately go to a public hearing and we're asking the public to comment on something of where the value of the land involved isn't known or agreed upon or determined, whatever we're doing with, with appraisals. And I believe from my, over the years where we've done vacations, that I've seen this before and that for other than the recent one and one in the distant past of where things had to be delayed because the appraisal wasn't done, it went off, that it worked. But I do think in retrospect that I would rather set the public hearing once we determine what the value of the land we're talking about is and that that's available to the public or at least what, if there's two separate values for the land, at least that that's there so that we, that public can consider that when they make their comments. And thus, I would, you know, really sort of like to get that one more step before we move to a definite date for a public hearing where we're asking the public to comment on what is an incomplete packet.
Very good.
And I would, and I will say that I, although I seconded it, I plan to vote against the motion.
Yeah. Thank you for allowing me to get it on the table. I appreciate that. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So this one, it looks like is a strip of land between two businesses. And in the application, there was some discussion of, you know, people wandering in and out, dumping, you know, just activity that's not productive for business. So I would just be mindful that I wouldn't want to drag something out, you know, if this, if us kicking this down the road is gonna drag out their process or trying to, to address a problem in Lakewood's right of way that is, you know, creating an issue for them. I wouldn't want to drag that out for any longer period of time. I don't know why folks couldn't comment. We couldn't take public comment. I don't know if the value of the property has anything to do with the justification for, you know, vacating the right of way. It's just, that's, that's just a dollar amount that we settle on and whether it's 100,000 or 200,000 or whatever the dollar amount is, is one thing, but you know, that's, I would just be mindful that if this is gonna impact, you know, if they're trying to clean up this area between the two properties, I would just be mindful of that as all.
Very good. And just a point of clarification, perhaps? And just, just a point of clarification, perhaps the city attorney can weigh in. The particular item that's on the table for consideration is just to set by resolution a public hearing date of October 7th, which by code is, you know, not more than 60 days or less than 20 after we adopt, if we were to do that type of adoption of this resolution. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, that that would be sufficient time to get the appraisal done and in the packet out to the public for consideration at the time of the public hearing, which hopefully would include the appraisal. But Mr. Branstadter's point is well taken. The public probably should have a full packet in, in front of them before they are making public comment on an item of interest. Adam, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have previously given you some fairly conservative advice, and I'm going to give that to you again tonight. The devil's in the details with any administrative process. And the issue right now is that you have to look at what you gave notice of. And if you're fixing the car as it's driving down the road, if you will, your point is well taken. The public arguably will have plenty of time to look at it. But from a purely legalistic perspective, the package is supposed to be ready at the time you give the public notice. And so that would be my only concern. And the reason that I say that is that if you look through the litany of administrative challenges, every jurisdiction all over the board, they're just looking for a foothold anywhere, right? So if we have an opportunity to make it as close to perfect as we can, that would be my advice. I'm not saying that you're wrong necessarily. I just think it's a riskier path than just recalibrating the whole thing.
Yep. So the recommendation from what I hear you say would be, let's get a completed packet before we give notice of the hearing date for the public hearing.
Correct.
You're good. Any further discussion on the item? Yes, sir. Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would actually like to move that we delay consideration of this item until September 15th.
Okay.
Which, by which time I would hope that a complete packet with the values of the land is, is, is going to be available, that we can then set the hearing date for the public to then have a complete packet.
Isn't the 16th the next regular meeting of the council? Two weeks, so it'd be the 7th. But we do have a motion to adopt on the table is the thing. So we either have to vote it down and then move to table. We have a motion to adopt the resolution. We can certainly deny it. And then they would have to reset it. They've heard enough from us about what our inclination is before it's set for public hearing.
I know, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's my understanding that if you have a motion in front of you, that, that, that a motion to delay consideration is within, is, is, is in order to be able to do that before a final, a final action is taken, just like any other amendment. But, you know, I, the first city attorney about do that, but, you know, otherwise you can't do that before you put a motion on the table. It's somewhat, the idea is if, based on the discussion of the motion, it seems to me, in the, in the reason for my mad, that it makes sense to delay consideration of it to be able to go and do that. I, I, I do think that Robert's rules allow for that.
I'll defer to the parliamentarian. It's a motion to table to a date certain, isn't it?
Well, Councilmember Branstadter and members of the council, I may be hearing it differently than what you're saying because to me, there is a difference between saying, I want this action item to be postponed to a date certain versus I want this action item to be tweaked and, and fixed a little bit and come back to us in a different form to be considered. Those are different questions. And so the correct action would be to vote on what you've got and then come back to that. I, I get it. It's a detail. I'm, as I said, I'm a little bit conservative about those things, but there is, it's a distinction only lawyers can love, right?
Right.
They are different though.
Mr. Bokey.
Do we know when we'll be getting the appraisal?
For that, we would want to check with the Home Department to make sure that we're not misplacing that.
So we, so we don't know. So I, I think we should just dispose of this, redo the resolution when the time comes when we're ready to go.
Very good. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we deny this now, when is the next time that they can apply and bring in a complete application? Can they get that within two weeks and get, I mean, could, could it be on the September 16th or whatever?
To set the resolution.
Set the resolution.
For the public hearing.
Yeah. I guess, I guess if we just throw this away now, how, how much are we delaying this?
Well,
Potentially.
Councilmember Pearson, the delay is in getting that appraisal, right? And so
We don't know.
Another answer I tend to give that no one really likes is that you can have a council meeting anytime you want. You can have a special council meeting on 24 hours' notice. But in terms of putting it on a regular meeting agenda, I believe we would want to get that appraisal first, and we don't have an answer to that question for you.
Thank you. So I guess I would recommend, council, that we consider the motions presently on the table without an amendment for a form of delay of consideration to a date certain because we'll get there. So all those in favor of resolution 2024 dash?
Mr. Mayor, it has been pointed out to me that the appraisal is not actually a necessary component of a complete application. So I want to make sure that the council's aware of that, if that's what you're waiting for. That's not the difference between a complete and incomplete application. So what you would be voting is that this complete application fails. You're not voting that it fails for being incomplete. I just want to make sure everybody's voting on the same thing.
I think I understand that. Mr. Pearson, did you have a point or Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah. Like, I'm going to vote against the motion, not because I've got any determination about the, the, the final action on the application. I'm just saying that it's, it's premature to set the public hearing date without some indication to the public about what the value of the land in, involved in the application is. And whether that is required, needed because it needs action on the part of the city or it needs some supplemental information from the applicant. It isn't, it isn't a final action on the application. It's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's an action on when are we ready to set the public hearing date? And I think you were, we're not ready.
Very good. I don't, I don't disagree with you. So all those in favor of adoption of resolution 2024-11 as it's before us signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So resolution 2024-11 fails. We now turn to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review.
Very good. And I believe we have our planning manager Tiffany Spear to join us virtually for an overview of the action item, actually the public hearing item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much and appreciate the opportunity to present to you remotely due to a, a work trip that I'm on. So thank you for that. I will share my screen to just provide a very brief overview. This is the second public hearing that we have conducted for the 2024 comprehensive plan. So can you see this? Okay. Is that the next slide showing as well? I'm sorry.
Uh, I see it.
Okay. Sorry, just try this again. Sorry for the delay. All right. So as I started with, this is the second of two public hearings that the City Council has scheduled for the 2024 periodic review of our comprehensive plan and development regulations, which is required under the Growth Management Act. It is required that it be completed by December 31st of this year. And then following this process, future reviews will now occur on a 10-year basis starting in 2034. The particular financial reason for making sure this is done in a timely way is to make sure that the city is eligible for grants and loans from state infrastructure programs. There's already been three study sessions on July 22nd, August 12th, and August 26th. And then the first public hearing was held August 19th. We will, as a city, provide to you next Monday night, responses to public comments received so far, and should there be any this evening, have responses for you to consider on that night as well. Included in the package are policy and plan updates, meaning the comprehensive plan itself, as well as a new Silicon Woodbrook subarea plan, and then changes to the downtown and station district subarea plans. There are also a number of regulatory changes. First of all, to our critical areas ordinance, we're incorporating the Shorelines Master Program and Restoration Plans into the code for reference and ease of finding it. There are some changes to our subdivision code Title 17. And then there are a number of other changes in LMC titles 18A, B, and C. A couple of particular ones to note again is that there are some new proposed short-term rental regulations that are modeled on the City of Gig Harbor's version. There's also changes under state law to public noticing regulations for all city public noticing, as a matter of fact. And then there's a number of other technical amendments included in the package as well. There are six or seven different attachments this evening, and they're laid out here on this slide. First of all, the comprehensive plan and the subarea plans, then the audit table that takes item by item, those amendments included, to explain the difference between the current version of those plans and what is proposed. There is the attachment of all of the titles, regulations changed. And then there's an audit table that walks through 18A, B, and C. There is the technical memorandum regarding the proposed repair in buffer widths we discussed at previous study sessions. And then there is an attachment that talks about the proposed change to the downtown subareas master plan development regulations. And finally, there is this evening, an attachment that talks about updated estimates for the downtown subarea transportation costs. Those will be discussed in more detail next Monday night as part of the study session. Recommended effective dates, this has been mentioned before, but for benefit of the public tonight, the city is recommending that the plans and regulations go into effect not in 30 days, as might normally be the case with ordinances, but in January of 2025. However, there will be a separate ordinance specifically related to the downtown master plan development changes, which we would recommend being effective 30 days after council action. Very quickly here on the screen, you'll see the 11 current chapters of the 2023 comprehensive plan as adopted. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the 15 elements now that are in the proposed new comprehensive plan, and then the appendices that are included as well. One thing to note is on our website now, we do have a version of this package that includes the technical appendix that goes with the comprehensive plan. It was not yet available for the materials for council. So we would ask that there be an opportunity for the public to baby review that and provide comment for, for council takes action on the 16th of September. Subarea plans, I already mentioned, we have a new Silicon Woodbrook plan that's included as part of the package. The downtown subarea plan is simply to update its boundary to reflect new parcels to be included that were rezoned last year. The station district changes relate to removing Lakewood Landing project from the package and then also changing the timing of future reviews of the subarea to the same cadence as has been adopted for downtown. The targets, we talked about this before the first public hearing, but very quickly, the city now has to plan not only for a total population between now and 2044, but it's broken out by various income levels. And then there's also a table here that shows the change over time targeted to downtown, the station district, and then other parts of the city for both jobs and housing units. This is the draft zoning map. I know it's a lot to look at on a screen right now, but a couple of things to point your, and the public's attention to, the area that's got yellow with dots where hopefully you can see my cursor.
Miss Spear, we, we can't actually see the referenced item on your screen. We're still stuck on the first slide, so.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay. Apologies. We'll try this one more time.
We've had some tech issues here too, so no problem.
Okay. Okay. Forgive me one second. So you're not able to see that right there?
I, I see the first slide. Yeah, it says Lakewood 2024 periodic review.
Okay, how about that? The change?
I don't see it. You just have to go down your slides. You're just on slide one.
Okay.
There you go. Slide two, yeah.
Okay.
Are you want to share a screen or?
I, I am actually having trouble because I've lost my control bar for the meeting, so give me just a moment. I am so sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Do you want to stop your screen share and start over?
That's what I'm trying to do. Is it possible for you to do, city clerk? Thank you. All right, we're going to try this one more time. Are you able to see that?
I see what you have as slide number two up, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we're going to keep it like this just to avoid future confusion. So this is where I was just moving along very rapidly. This is again summarizing the subarea plan changes. And then this is the chart that I referred to regarding the various area median income, total number of units that need to be planned for, as well as the jobs and housing units scheduled at this point for the downtown, the station district, and then the rest of the city. This is the zoning map that I mentioned. And again, the areas where the yellow has the darker dots over them, that is where the higher residential densification would happen under the new state law that requires that. What you'll see on the western side, generally speaking of the city, is various shades of yellow. And these are the new zones, many of which are not different, but they may have, in name, they're not different, but they may have different density, which has been discussed at length at both the Planning Commission and the City Council levels. Very quickly, what you also see is the fact that now in single-family areas, Lakewood must allow middle housing and accessory dwelling units at higher densities than in the past. Jumping topics to the shoreline master program and the critical areas ordinance. In brief, the shoreline master program has a certain number of water bodies that will continue to be regulated under it, and there are no changes to those regulations. These include American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Lake Louise, Silicon Lake, Wahop Lake, Chambers and Clover Creeks, and then the shorelands within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark for all of those water bodies. So again, all of these are not changing. What is changing are the water bodies listed over here in the purple circle. They will now be regulated under our critical areas ordinance, and they have, in some cases, different and larger buffers that are now required per best available science. This table summarizes that. And so essentially, you'll see the shorelines of the state are those ones I just mentioned. They remain unchanged. The fish bearing and non-fish bearing and no designation water bodies that are now under our critical areas ordinance is where there are is where there are changes. And this is where we've talked about this idea of a lower buffer width on the type F or fish-bearing waters based on the analysis that the city has done of best available science versus being in the middle of the city of Lakewood versus a rural area. Short-term rentals, we've talked about this in the past as well, but just a quick reminder that this is reflecting in the package for tonight, the recommendation from planning commission that short-term rentals be allowed in accessory dwelling units throughout the city. The proposal includes updated definitions and regulations consistent with state law. And then again, there's a set of regulations that are proposed that are based on Gig Harbor's model. There are a number of other various sundry regulations in all of these titles, which have been included in all five of the city council meetings to date this fall. And they will continue to be provided for every meeting going forward. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions or step aside for the public hearing.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Spear. Are there any questions of Ms. Spear on her overview before we turn to the actual public hearing? And it may be a very short public hearing at that. Thank you, Ms. Spear. So this is the date set for the public hearing on the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review as articulated by our planning manager, Ms. Spear. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address B Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been or will have been provided to the city council electronically. But for transparency of our record, the city clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted testimony on this particular item in advance.
Mayor, we received written testimony in advance from James Dunlop, Tishamir Dunlop, Josh Friedman, the Gary Oak Coalition, and Christina Manetti.
Thank you very much. Testimony during this public hearing is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to this public hearing topic. Virtual testimony is likewise authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782. Enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373 and visit the Zoom room. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name where indicated and use the raise the hand feature to be called upon so that we can be sure to recognize you for your public testimony. So I'll first call on those who are here in person, who have signed in on the sign-in sheet to address or provide public testimony on this particular action item. And the only individual for the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review, there are no individuals rather who have signed up on the sheet. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to provide testimony for the public hearing on the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll turn to those who may be appearing virtually. And the first hand I see raised to provide public testimony on the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic review, Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello again, Christina Manetti Lakewood. I just wanted to comment on the problem of tree protection and the amendments. GMA doesn't allow for net loss in critical areas. Oregon white oak woodland and single oaks in urban and urbanizing contexts do constitute critical areas. So Lakewood's policies allow a net loss of critical areas. They allow oak woodland to be subdivided out of existence. They allow single oaks to be cut down supposedly because they are not valuable enough to wildlife, even though WDFW habitat biologist says there are regulations allow developers to pay mitigation fees in exchange for cutting down irreplaceable Gary Oaks for which there is no mitigation, scores of them for warehouses, for example. According to best available science, WDFW's management recommendations in this case, Gary Oaks are not to be cut down here west of the Cascades, except for stand enhancement, not to be cut down. Not for houses, not for garages, not for driveways, not for warehouses. They are not to be cut down. The city allows ivy to cover oaks and other trees, suffocating them and eventually toppling them and killing them, or both. Other cities have regulations against this. Lakewood has to start thinking of its trees like something that is worth protecting. They want a tree canopy of 40% by 2050, which is nice, but they still allow this destruction to continue. Trees are living beings. Everyone can agree. If a property owner had a dog and was smothering the dog or otherwise harming it or even killing it, someone would call the police. It's animal cruelty. This is a crime. People are convicted of animal cruelty. There are fines or even prison sentences. But people aren't convicted of cruelty to trees or even Gary Oaks. Now, it's about time that Lakewood starts seeing trees and other plants as being alive. They don't have blood, but they do suffer and die. The plans to supposedly protect trees and expand the tree canopy are meaningless in Lakewood unless the city bans their continued abuse and destruction. Protecting our trees is in our own best interest. In this age of heat domes, urban heat islands, mass die-offs, and the sixth extinction, our fates, the fates of humans and trees are connected. Lakewood's oaks and other trees must be afforded maximum protections today. And the city's code and comp plan must be amended to reflect this resolve. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work, and I hope to see positive changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand I see is Josh Friedman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Josh Friedman, and I'm representing LRI to follow up on comments that Kevin Green made for LRI a couple of weeks ago. As a refresher, LRI is part of the Lemay and Waste Connections companies and is the city's garbage and recycling services provider. It is designated and listed by the comprehensive plan as both a public service provider and a major utility provider for the city. LRI appreciates the councils and the staff's attention to helping us manage capacity of the trash and recycling network as the city and the city's waste needs continue to grow. We've been working closely with Tiffany Spear and other members of the city's planning division staff, and we really appreciated the staff team's help in ensuring that we're addressing LRI's media term questions about recycling uses on the sales roadside, as well as her longer-term questions about larger system-wide bandwidth. We understand that as part of the final development regulations in this package, Tiffany will be suggesting code language regarding recycling facilities in the Air Corridor 1 zone. We've seen the initial draft of this text, and LRI supports this approach. We hope this approach will make your 2024 periodic update adoption process a little more streamlined and your meeting agendas a little more efficient while also avoiding capacity bottlenecks for waste in the region. In the longer term, we'll also be working with the city to reinstate industrial zoning on the easterly part of our sales roadside. We would expect that particular action to probably come before you next year. Thanks again for all your attention to ensuring continuity and efficiency of urban services like garbage and recycling. LRI is looking forward to continuing to work with you and your staff team. Thanks again.
Thank you. That is the last individual, Madam Clerk, that I see with a virtual hand raised to provide testimony for this particular public hearing. Unless you see any others, we'll give a few seconds here. Ms. Manetti, you have a hand raised, but you've already provided testimony, so I'll take that as just kind of a lingering hand. Thank you. Are there any others wishing to address, provide testimony on this particular public hearing? Seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed. We now turn to the next item set for public hearing this evening. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor.
What did I do now?
I, well, I apologize. I, we should have pointed out that there's a slight difference in the script than what you're used to at the end of a public hearing. We had indicated at the request of of Ms. Spear that the public comment actually remain open until a time certain or a public hearing.
I see that. I'll announce that. Thank you for reminding me. So it's been recommended by staff that the public hearing be remained open for written public comment until September 16 at 6:00 PM. So the public hearing, not testimony for tonight in terms of oral testimony, but the public hearing to receive written testimony shall remain open for written comments through Monday, September 16, 2024 at 6:00 PM. So I stand corrected on that. Thank you very much. We're grappling with all sorts of items up here. So next, Madam Clerk, this is the date set for the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding program. And again, I will call on Tiffany Spear, our planning manager, who will join us virtually to provide a brief overview on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to avoid confusion and mistakes with this presentation, I'm gonna do it in the same format as before. So jumping topics, we're now talking about the American Rescue Plan Act. And this is pretty much the final take for the council to take a look at how funds have been spent, what funds remain and are anticipated, and then making decisions to potentially update your actions authorizing the dollars to be spent on particular activities or projects. So first of all, did the slide just advance for you?
Yes, we're on number 50.
See it.
All right, thank you. So under the US Treasury rules for ARPA, the city of Lakewood must obligate, which means assign through some sort of action by the city council, and then if appropriate, adopt and execute a contract. All of its funds no later than December 31st of 2024, and then expend, meaning transfer to a project expenditure that the city itself is conducting, or expand, meaning transfer dollars to a sub-recipient of those dollars, for instance, Lhasa, for instance, Tacoma Probono, some of the others that have been awarded funds. Those must all be provided to those third parties by December 31 of 26. The city was appropriated a total of about 13.77 million by the federal government. And after a series of ordinances and motions that began in 2021, there was a particular motion, which was number 202355. The council obligated approximately $725,000 toward the improvement or creation of Edgewater and Downtown Parks. And also with a direction that any, quote, residual funds from other completed projects be re-obligated to the park improvements. Since then, there's been a couple of things that have occurred that are being brought to your attention with the potential for you to change what's included in 202355's proviso, and also what to do with any remaining funds that have yet to be allocated, such as accrued interest. So so far, under that motion that said funds go to the two parks, there have been the full 725, but another roughly $89,000 have been used to date on Edgewater Park. This includes acquisition costs for property, legal fees, appraisal costs, and survey work. And so what we have there is a total of $813,775 that has gone to Edgewater Park to date. In addition to the funds that may remain from completed ARPA projects, there has also been interest accruing since the funds were awarded or transferred to the city from the federal government. And as of now, they total about $833,600. There are additional funds anticipated with the refunds that have not yet been transferred to third parties. So at this point, the accrued interest for the life of ARPA is estimated to be $850,000. So since 202355 was adopted, a couple of other things that has occurred. First of all, and this was discussed, if I'm remembering correctly, last Monday or the Monday before, there was discussion with the council regarding the support beams for city hall. And at your discussion, there it is, on August 26th, the council agreed with option one that has an estimated cost of $685,950. The other thing that is outstanding still is that even though there has been a motion by city council to support Pierce County Village, which if you'll recall is something that at this point is slated to be built, generally speaking, in the Spanaway area, around Spanaway Loop Road, it was intended to be a chronically homeless shelter site that would include housing specifically for homeless veterans. However, this has been appealed by both sides actually to the hearing examiner. And in addition to that, the county hearing examiner has been replaced. So as of tonight, or as of us, yes, as of tonight, we do not know of a decision that's been made on the appeals regarding this project. So the question is whether or not the council wants to leave that motion awarding a million dollars to Pierce County Village unchanged, or maybe consider some amendment to that. The recommendation is that the city actually amend the motion awarding dollars to Pierce County Village to add a proviso that if the project has not moved forward for whatever reason by December 15th of this year, that the funds be re-obligated to support Edgewater Park improvements and the downtown park creations. Second recommendation is that the currently available residual funds, meaning those funds coming from already completed projects that didn't spend all of their dollars, that at this point total $654,255 be re-obligated per that motion 202355. And then looking at the accrued interest to date, which is again at about $850,000, that 350,000 of that be obligated to the city hall beam project. That 500,000 of the 850 then also be allocated, this time in support of the street end pilot project for 2025 and 2026. So again, these are the four recommendations that would amend potentially motion 2022100. And then it would clarify that the funds for the residual dollars that have accrued to date would go toward Edgewater and Downtown Parks. The accrued interest would be split between the city hall beam project and then also the street end pilot project. And with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer questions or step aside for council, or the council hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Spear, my members of the council? Council member Bran Stetter.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Spears, I just have a clarifying question on the recommendations.
Sure.
Is the actions that at the end of this process, after the completion of this hearing, and we're considering are one recommendation is to amend a motion from 2022. And then there are three other recommendations. Are we gonna be able to combine all, implementing all of these recommendations, if we agree with them, into a single council action, or are we going, looking at two or more separate council actions to implement all four?
I would defer to the city attorney. In my own mind, there is the potential to do either a single agenda bill that includes these recommendations to be acted on all at once, or it could be done individually. But again, I would ask the city attorney maybe to provide a better response than what I just did.
Yeah, again, I think the thing that caused me to maybe be uncertain as to what it was is that the recommendation is to amend a motion, a previous motion. One of the recommendations, and that seems like a separate action from the others that would be similar to all the other things of where we've allocated dollars. But is is amend the motion not actually an amending amendment of the motion, but a just an agenda bill that implements these four recommendations?
Yes.
Stetter and members of the council, an agenda bill does not amend anything. So the agenda bill is designed to walk you through what the legislative piece should do in the same way the whereas is are not the legislation. So what I would want to do is go over what's actually being presented to the council in terms of legislation as far as how we're going to present that. But the agenda bill is designed to be a roadmap for you of what the legislation will do.
So might be. And they'll determine the appropriate approach to.
Correct, and I believe over the years, that department has been challenged with very complex pieces that with very complex pieces that interact and don't interact and have to be looked at from a number of perspectives. And I think they have done an amazing job of giving you charts and breakdowns and so forth. I don't think this would be any different than that, trying to walk you through what the actual legislative piece accomplishes. And as always, when your manager meets with you every week, if you have things that you want to try and look at, we will certainly incorporate that.
Very good. Any other questions of Ms. Spear before we turn to the public hearing? Seeing none, this is the date set for the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA program funding. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher at 6,000 Main Street, Southwest in Lakewood, or to be schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the city council electronically. And the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony on this topic in advance.
Mayor, we received written testimony in advance of the meeting from Deidre Conant, Penny Cooper Howard, Al Schmouter, and Elliot Winter, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Thank you very much. As was the case with the prior public hearing, testimony is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. We ask that if you are providing live virtual comment, that you certainly state your name for the record. And speaking of that, because I just had a comment on virtual testimony, if you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. And upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. And for those participating by calling in by telephone, use the raise the hand feature by pressing star nine on your phone. And when unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence. So at this point, I will call on those who are in person, who have signed in on the public hearing sheet to provide testimony on the public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Act program funding. There was one individual who did sign in, Dr. Abraham Mirja Leely. And I do not see him in the audience at present. If there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to provide public testimony in this particular public hearing item, now is the time. Seeing none, I will move to those who are appearing via Zoom, to sign, to have signed in via Zoom. And the first is Christina Minetti with her hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello again, Christina Minetti, Lakewood. I just wanted to make brief comments about ARPA. I don't know too much about it, but as I understand it, it was a stimulus bill to aid public health and economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, of course. So I'd like to know how the city can justify allocating ARPA funds to condemn and demolish a family's home to make a parking lot for four boat trailers. This does not make sense. Who is this really helping? Aren't there more important things that Lakewood could spend this extra money on in this time when everybody is strapped for cash? The money from ARPA that is is under discussion to to be given to Edgewater Park and other parks projects should be given to support the homeless, to develop homeless projects in Lakewood so that when Lakewood police do give citations for being homeless, for sleeping on the street or camping, so these people have someplace to go. The money from the Spanaway Tiny Home Project, which of course is an abomination and should not be allowed anyway, the money of $1 million that Lakewood's giving to that project should be spent on homeless programs, not on Edgewater Park or other parks, unless, of course, the city intends to make the parks into homeless accommodations. So that's what I would like you to do. I would like you to use ARPA to especially help the homeless in Lakewood and perhaps the region as well. I think that people say there aren't that many homeless in Lakewood, but I find it hard to believe that there are only 17 homeless in Lakewood. I really don't think that's the case. So please do do earmark some of that money for the homeless rather than needless parks, expansions, and glorified parking lots and new roads and whatever else we don't need. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
That was the only hand raised to provide public testimony. I'll wait for a few minutes to see if any of the names on the screen raise their hand. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to unfinished business and or new business, Mr. Coffield.
There is no unfinished business nor new business, Mayor.
Very good, sir. We'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. I'd like to call upon our city attorney to give you a follow up regarding an ordinance, draft ordinance that we talked with you earlier this year to address persistent offenders, including a recommendation based on the analysis that has been done since then, which, if I recall, was early February.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney. And in February, we brought you something that another city was using. They had just started using it. It was mandatory minimums for certain offenses, public disorder crimes. If somebody had three or more of these public disorder crimes, they would get a certain amount of jail time. I have been in contact with the city. They don't have any data. And they have not indicated what the cost is of putting people in jail for any extended periods. They they assure me that the program is working well. That's what I got. And as you know, that doesn't always give you all the information you need. We've also learned that our system of filing in the prosecutor's office is a little cumbersome when it comes to gathering data, but I've had the opportunity this summer, due to some of the turnover in our staff, of being at least a part-time city prosecutor and got to play with our files. It it was more fun than I'm making it sound. It was actually, it's a good way to get to know what's really going on in the courtrooms. We do have some persistent offenders, a couple that are through our courts so often, I can't even tell you. However, our folks who get to that level of coming through the courtroom also tend to go with a certain amount of competency issues. And therefore, when they raise those competency issues in court, it's not just a matter of, well, then you can't put them in jail. It's you can't do anything with someone who is found to be incompetent. They're not able to assist in their own defense. And so we found that as one issue. And the other issue we found is we just don't have a lot that rise to that level. And in my study, and I went through all the cases from 2024 and ran some checks on how many times some of our frequent offenders from 2024 had been before the court in previous years, there really were only two that I found. I think there are probably a few more, but we're still talking about such an infinitesimally small part of your caseload. So question number one is how big is the problem in Lakewood? It's not, that's not our biggest issue. The second problem is that we can't prosecute people who are found to be incompetent. Now, the other part of the problem is that when people are found to be incompetent at a misdemeanor level, there's not necessarily a what happens next. So we have some ideas about how to maybe deal with those internally. We may start gathering those particular offenders and starting to have conversations with service providers and just see if there's some other way to approach it. But a mandatory minimum is going to have literally no effect on those offenders. So our recommendation is that while Marysville has apparently a number of frequent offenders for whom this is a good answer, we have the tools we need in that regard. And we will not be bringing this forward unless the council feels strongly about it. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions? Ms. Walker, Mr. Branstadter.
Ms. Walker, thank you for researching. It seems that six months later, Marysville still doesn't have shareable data is unfortunate, but that's what we were hoping to have to maybe base some decision. I was just wondering is one of the things that this council did as we looked at our priorities and we looked ahead into the next biennium was to study whether or not we would want to move from an in-house municipal court to municipal court services being by the county or someone else to be able to to do that. And is while you have your recommendation now, would such a change, perhaps, warrant looking at this one more time if we make that change?
Councilmember Branstadter, I don't think having a different court is going to change the realities associated with competency issues for misdemeanor offenders. It it's just not going to change that particular thing. But I will tell you that I know that in the city manager's dealings with the county, one of the issues, and this is not unusual, is how much local control can we retain going into someone else's court? And so that's not beyond the realm of possibilities that we retain, for example, some control over certain code violation cases that might go to that court, things that the city has particular interest in. If this became something that was relevant and useful to the city of Lakewood, I believe, based on what I think the negotiations would look like, we would be able to implement our own approach to some of these things. And it's not beyond the realm of possibilities that we would retain prosecution. We might not. It just depends on how things come together. You don't automatically get prosecution by making a deal for the court services.
I thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Walker? Thank you for the update. Much appreciated. Mr. Coffield, anything else?
Just a few items. I know every year, a member of the council participates in the selection of the Larry Saunders Award. And there's a recognition, there's a committee that's pulled together. I know last year it was Councilmember Branstadter and the year before, Councilmember Bell. So the they are looking for representative from this body to serve again on the committee. They'll look to meet and review applications in in the October-November timeframe. The other representatives are from the Lakewood Community Foundation and in the Chamber of Commerce. So Mayor, I would just ask in the next week or so, if there's interest from a member of the council to serve on that, let us know. And we can follow up with 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 the committee. And then just real quick, in terms of upcoming events, this Saturday is the Fiesta de la Familia event at Fort Stilicon Park, where you all will be joined by the by Council Jorge Lopez, who's with the Mexican consulate here in Seattle. And there'll be a formal welcome that will kick off at 12:45 P. M. over at the pavilion stage. And I know, Mayor, we've been in contact with you about that to be there to introduce the Council Lopez. On next Wednesday, as you heard a little earlier this evening, West Pierce Fire Rescue District will be holding a 9/11 ceremony down at their headquarters building in University Place, and that is at 5:30 P. M. Then the following afternoon, on Thursday, September 12, from 4:30 to 6:00, over at Fort Stilicon Park, the pavilion will be holding our annual volunteer recognition event. And thus far, as of this morning, we had over 40 RSVPs from your many board members and committee members to attend that. So just wanted to give you a heads up, heads up on that.
When is that again?
That is next Thursday, September 12, from 4:30 to 6:00 P. M. At the at the pavilion. So if you recall, last year, we had it at the Rotunda. Last couple of years, we had it at the Rotunda at Clover Park Technical College. But this year, we'll have it at the
At 4:30.
Have it at the pavilion. So
Okay.
With that, that's my update, Mayor.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Coffield? Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's now September, and so what's the status on the bridge?
Councilmember Pearson, the work on the bridge continues. It's expected to be opened probably about the third or fourth week in September. So it's they actually, they're legally required to be done by the end of September. But that's the that's the anticipated date at this point in time. Just trying to manage expectations. They may be done sooner. If they are, we'll let you know. But right now, they're looking at the third or fourth week of September. But it is progressing quite nicely.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Coffield, were there any actionable lessons learned from the initial investigation of the train pedestrian accident?
Councilmember Branstadter, I think the lesson learned is the individual who unfortunately was hit by the train. We understand that he was highly intoxicated and you know, just didn't get out of the way and was actually looking at the train as it came on him as he was holding a bottle of beer or liquor.
So is there have we have we eliminated that it was that it was an actual suicidal gesture?
We don't know if it was a suicide. The there was there was officers that were literally parked right there and saw him walk right into the uncalming train. And he kept looking at it and then just got hit by the train. Actually, thankfully, they were there because they were able to secure the scene very quickly, given it was not a very pretty sight.
Any else for Mr. Coffield? Thank you very much. We'll now turn to council comments. Mr. Bokey. Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you again to the youth council for coming tonight and their report, and that I will be at the Fiesta de la Familia this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment briefly on some of the comments about the our use of ARPA funds. You know, I think that when we compare our city's use of ARPA funds with the manner of cities around the country who have gotten ARPA funds so that we have spent our dollars much more deliberately and much more to long-term community benefit as opposed to just balancing the city's regular budget, which is unfortunately been the norm around the country of how cities have have spent their ARPA funds doing all that. And thus, those cities don't have the problem we have of trying to figure out the best use of the remaining dollars in the short window that we have to do that. I I think that it is, it's hard over a four-year program to look at the the fact that we did actually spend a good bit of money or effort to spend money on on housing and homelessness issues, being able to go and do that through the one of the things that was frustrating was when we asked for proposals to do things in Lakewood, we didn't get responses from many of the folks that are in the the business of of helping the homeless. You know, LASSA being perhaps the exception because they're the ones that's over there. But you know, there were folks that were willing to take the money, but they wanted to go there. That's what led us to the Pierce County Village proposal and and recommending that, you know, many of the issues that that hearing examiner is in a quandary over are environmental. And in fact, our provisos on providing that money were environmental in nature as well. And we, you know, we shared the concern about wanting to do that. I think, you know, the the final proposal that we saw at least met our requirements of it. I mean, it remains to be seen, and it remains to be seen whether something can be resolved in a timely enough matter or that or we'll have to reallocate those dollars. The other thing is, is that there is a lot of evidence within our own experience and and experience around the thing that that arcs our communities better, that makes them more livable, that they that they enhance the possibility for both housing and jobs and 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 be able to go and do that. And the fact that we've spent and intend to spend ARPA dollars on on parks the ARPA dollars on on parks um and and have spent them on parks um is a a testimony that we're looking to spend the money in ways that will make a difference. Um, that you can characterize the expenditures on regarding the work at Edgewater Park. In a variety of different ways, but I choose to characterize them of making a significant effort to get a significant amount of shoreline into public access in a in a way that's that's going off that way. And I think that our our ARPA dollars being a part of our effort to do that um is to our credit.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Uh, I I would echo uh your comments, Mr. Branstadter. I think this city has done a good job, an admirable job of using uh the ARPA funds in uh solid ways that benefit the community across a spectrum of interests and investments and these one time money opportunities. Uh, it's been councils' hope with these last few dollars that we make long lasting impact as best we can with these investments, these one time investments in capital. So I appreciate your comments on that. Uh, in terms of my own comments, uh, this last Wednesday, I, on behalf of both City of Lakewood and my capacity. What's that? Oh, Deputy Mayor Moss. I thought I already asked Patty.
You haven't asked Mary.
I asked Mr. Boki, Mary, would you like to speak? Before I launch into my thirty minutes of public comments. Deputy Mayor Moss, thank you for the nudge.
I I just wanted to say that I I enjoyed the dessert in the driveway. I think that was a really good, I don't know how he planned to proceed with that, but it's a good pathway to get into the community. So I appreciated that. Um, I will be at the kickoff uh event on Saturday. And I do plan to, I will be attending the Lakewood Promise Board meeting tomorrow morning, so let's see.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mary. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you all for keeping me on task. I appreciate it. Uh, as I was saying, Mr. Boki, I did uh attend the Pierce Transit event for the bus grade, the shelter uh upgrades that we're doing throughout the community and the service area, including Lakewood. And so we had Congresswoman Strickland here uh to thank her for her federal dollars and have made the program possible. And so you'll see more on that. I think there was something that came out about the the upgraded shelters are going to be easier to maintain. Uh, they're certainly more attractive for our users. They provide lighting through solar power apparatus and it's it's a good thing. So that was a fun event. And then the desserts in the driveway, I want to appreciate uh our neighborhood coordinator, Chris, for putting that together. Uh, I thought it was a well attended event, and I think those kinds of activities help promote interaction, certainly among neighbors. But it's my hope they provide more opportunities for dialogue uh among ourselves with the neighbors, because I think that that open, fair, honest dialogue and transparency is really what people love to see and enjoy. So thank you for attending on that as well. I will appear at the Fiesta de Familia on Saturday. Look forward to that. And lastly, there was a podcast that came out uh where I was making some comments about civility and politics and talked a little bit about uh, you know, what we hope to accomplish at the local level, and I think we do a fine job of uh as opposed to what we may see at the national level or even the state level on occasion. So again, I always uh provide a laudatory and and thankful comments about my experience here with all of us working together in Lakewood. It really is, it really is a good thing that we have, not that we agree on everything all the time, which I think is also a good thing. But we uh have the capacity to uh disagree on occasion without being disagreeable. And that's a beautiful thing. And I also talked a little bit about what I have found personally as helpful and constructive feedback from the public during public comment type uh sessions like tonight. And so in light of that, I just feel compelled uh to make my own public comment about the insinuation that somehow my integrity should be questioned because of a legislative matter before the council in the form of the application for a street end. And I've received and I respond to various emails on this issue. And I will tell Mr. Dunlap and Ms. Manetti the same that I told others. Council members like us make legislative, quasi judicial, and on very rare occasions administrative decisions. This, if he were to care to do his legal research, because he likes to do lots of research, this is a legislative matter that comes before the council. According to state law, in the absence of a personal financial interest or a benefit in the outcome of such legislative decisions, no council member is obligated by state law, local code, or council rules to recuse or abstain themselves from voting on such matters. And so I have not made the decision whether to abstain or recuse myself from consideration of the matter, but I'm not required to if it actually comes before us. I've not made up my mind on how I would vote because we've not received the full packet, the staff recommendation or the appraisal. But I think it's important to note with the insinuation of friendships and friendliness in Lakewood in light of legislative matters, I think it's incumbent upon the public to understand that all of us here are friends with or are friendly with many people in the community. On August fifth, there was a plethora of public comment on this particular subject. I wasn't here, but I listened to every single comment virtually. There were a multitude of commenters, both for and against this particular vacation application. And it's not surprising, not to me anyway, that I am friends or friendly with commenters on both sides of this issue. As I am friends or friendly with commenters on both sides of many issues that have come before us. And I just want the public to know that I understand concerns about bias and uh appearing untoward when you are friends or friendly with someone who has an issue become that comes before council. But these legislative decisions are those where we receive comment from people, we receive calls from people. And we can't recuse if we happen to know someone or are friendly with someone who happens to have an issue before the council. And the other thing that it's important to note is that I am but a one vote of seven. I have six other extremely bright, dedicated, thoroughly researching and listening council members who make their own decisions on how to vote. And like me, they have made no advanced decision on this issue as well, and nor should they. Because it's not before us for a final determination. So for those who are concerned about this, perhaps you have no friends. And this wouldn't even be an issue for you to consider because you don't have those relationships like I perhaps do, and I'm blessed to have them. But I just want to be clear. This is a legislative determination. And whether one is friends with or friendly with the applicants is not a basis for recusal under the law. That's all I had to say about that. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.